To the City Planning Commission Review Session, good afternoon.
Thank you. The time is 1:03 PM and a quorum is present.
The first item on our agenda is the certification of a special permit and zoning text amendment in Queen's Community District Two. Our presenter is Scott Solomon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ryan, can you just confirm that you can see the slides?
Yeah, we can see the slides.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Next slide, please. This is a private application by RXR 4211 9th Holdings LLC, or RXR, seeking approval of an industrial business incentive area, or IBIA, special permit and related text amendment to facilitate the development of a 21-story mixed-use building, including office, retail, and required industrial space, consisting of approximately 321,000 square feet in the Long Island City neighborhood of Queen's Community District Two. Next slide. RXR has experience in the industrial sector, specifically in Long Island City. They have owned and operated the Standard Motors Products Building since 2014, which includes several industrial tenants ranging from the command team, creature shop to a coffee roaster, several printing, woodcraft, and other make-of-ty tenants. The mixed-use building includes several office tenants, including creative nonprofit and financial services companies. RXR is a demonstrator history working with industrial brokers and looks to expand their industrial performance. Next slide.
I'm sorry, he's coming in and out.
Yeah, Scott, you're fading in and out, your voice.
All right, going to backup computer audio, does that sound okay? Test, test.
That is a little better.
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize for that. Moving on to the next slide, please, Jeff. In 2016, the CPC adopted two IBIA special permits. The first special permit allows a development in an IBIA to increase their maximum FAR to the higher community facility FAR if specific industrial and commercial uses are included in development. Currently, the special permit is only available within M12 districts, including the areas of IBZ, also known as IBIA1. There, above the maximum base FAR of two, an owner may increase the maximum allowable floor area by three and a half square feet for every one square foot of required industrial use up to the maximum FAR of 4.8, provided that the additional floor area beyond the base is occupied only by required industrial uses and incentive uses, uses which are permitted in the underlying M1 district with certain exceptions, including retail, eating and drinking establishments, and transient hotels. The high and setback regulations can also be modified to increase the additional floor area. And the second special permit allows the CPC to modify off-street parking at the main residential doors. The buildings, subject to the previous special permits, were designed to appeal to small, immediate creative and major space-type industrial tenants. This is the framework of the special permit application request. Next slide. Over the past several decades, Long Island City has been transitioning from a traditional industrial neighborhood to one of the most diverse economies in the country. The area has seen significant residential development in recent years, but there has also been substantial progress in bringing more diverse set of uses, including large commercial office buildings, light science-oriented, and institutional development, all while retaining its industrial character. Long Island City was identified as a potential CBD for growing jobs nearly 30 years ago. Expansion of industrial to commercial development in Long Island City is consistent with New York Works, a city's plan to create over 100,000 new, good-paying jobs. In Long Island City's proximity, transit options leading to places like Royal Tech, Big Town Manhattan, Hudson Yards make Long Island City very attractive for development. Since 2010, over 10 million square feet of commercial space has been delivered to the market in Long Island City, but the majority of the space is through the conversion of existing buildings. Next slide, please. The project area located-
Scott, I'm sorry, I'm wondering, you're still fading in and out. And I'm wondering if you could just speak a little bit more slowly, if there's not a technical fix to your volume, if you could just speak a little more slowly.
Understood.
Thank you.
The project area located at 4211 9th Street, Queens Plaza South, between 9th Street and 10th Street, is located in an M1 district that allows for a maximum commercial and industrial FAR of 2.0 and a maximum community facility FAR of 6.5. The surrounding areas characterize- Next slide, please. Jeff, in changing audio, I enhance, I tell you, go two slides ahead, can you go two slides back? Thank you. The surrounding area is characterized by a mix of mostly industrial and commercial buildings, and the project area is located within a portion of the Long Island City IBZ, established in 2006. North of the Queensborough Bridge, within an existing R6 district, are the Queensbridge Houses, the largest public housing facility in North America. In the west of the Nitro property, in fronting the East River, is the 20-acre Queensborough. Three subway stations beyond the map area, boundaries above, are within a ten to walk distance of the project area, including the Queensborough Plaza subway station to the east, Queens Plaza South, or Square Station to south, and the 21st Street Queensbridge Station to the northeast.
I'm having a very, very difficult time hearing you.
Yeah. My checklist of audiences, I turned off a local fan here, is that helping at all?
Let's give it another shot.
It's not a question of background noise, it's the, there's either the headphones or the computer microphone is cutting in and out.
Okay, I'm gonna give us one, try before another backup fix. Among these stations have access to the 7N WEM and F lines. A local Q102 bus runs along Vernon Boulevard to the west of the project area, and the local Q103 bus has a stop at 41st Avenue and 10th Street. A city bike station is also located one block south of the project area. Next slide, please. Project area is coterminous with the development site, has a lot area of approximately 49,000 square feet, with approximately 200 feet of frontage on Queens Plaza South to the north, and approximately 250 feet of frontage on both 9th Street to the west and 10th Street to the east. Next slide, please. The project area is currently improved with a one-story industrial building occupied by Tidy Machine Corporation, an elevator machining and repair facility with approximately 18 employees. Tidy Machine would be a development partner with the applicant, and they plan to voluntarily relocate their facility to a smaller, more efficient building within two months. Next slide, please. Photo slides are photosing existing conditions. Photo one on the left, a view of 10th Street facing northeast, site to the left. DCP views the 10th Street corridor here as a vital resource, future resource, to connect the area south of the Queensborough Bridge to the residence of Queensbridge Houses. Currently, the space under the bridge is used by DOT, and pedestrians must either take Vernon Boulevard or 21st Street to the east to move across from Queensbridge Houses, Queensbridge Houses South. Future development fronting 10th Street is viewed by DOT as an important prerequisite in their consideration to establish this connection. Photo on the right, number two, is a view of Queens Plaza South, facing northwest, from 10th Street, site at the left. Next slide. Photo three, a view of 10th Street facing southwest, Queens Plaza South, site at the right. Photo four, a view of the site facing south from the intersection of Queens Plaza South and 9th Street. Next slide, please. Photo five, a view of 9th Street facing southwest, Queens Plaza South. To the right is a 9th Street hotel, the development site on the left. Photo six, a view of 9th Street facing northeast, Queensborough Bridge, seen at the background, and tell them that, site at the right. Next slide, please.
I can't hear anything.
I'm gonna ask, Scott, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna ask if Alexis can step in here? Just to- Is this right? Alexis, are you there?
Can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. So, to close out these two photos, we are looking on the left, a view of the site facing northeast from 9th Street. Oh, I'm sorry, I think we may be one behind. So, on the right, we are viewing 9th Street facing northeast with the site at the right-hand side. Next slide, please. And now, on the left, we have a view of the site facing northeast from 9th Street, and the view on the right is of Queens Plaza South facing southeast from 9th Street, and the site is at the right. That's the existing Titan Machine facility. Next slide. And in terms of the proposed development, the applicant is proposing a new 21-story mixed-use building containing approximately 321,000 square feet of commercial and industrial space. The breakdown is approximately 98,876 square feet of permitted use, 64,270 square feet of the required industrial uses, that equals a 1.3 FAR, and 158,201 square feet of incentive uses. All of those together make up that overall 6.5 FAR. The proposed maximum building envelope height would be 330 feet, and the proposed maximum bulkhead envelope height would be an additional 40 feet. So, within that envelope, the applicant proposes a building roof that rises to approximately 312 feet, with the bulkhead then continuing an additional 20. The retail and required industrial uses would be located on the ground floor and additional required industrial uses on the second and third floors. The upper floors would consist predominantly of office space, categorized as both permitted and incentive use, and possibly an eating and drinking establishment, which would be a permitted use, on the top of the building. The first and second floors have floor plates of approximately 30,000 square feet, and on the upper floors, the floor plates range from 13,000 to 16,000 square feet. And the variety of floor places are intended to provide maximum flexibility for a broad range of office uses, such as design firms that may be interested in having a smaller but complete floor plate to themselves. There is no requirement for providing parking, although 67 spaces would be permitted on-site. Next slide, please. The ground floor site plan indicates the uses by color, gray being the parking, loading, and mechanical space, blue representing the required industrial space, yellow represents the incentive uses, and purple are the permitted uses. Pursuant to the application requirement of the IBIA special permit, the filed floor plans establish the location of freight elevators and loading areas and the location of the floor area dedicated to the required industrial uses and incentive uses. The permitted uses include approximately 2,900 square feet of ground floor retail at the corner of 10th and Queens Plaza South. The first floor would be used primarily for the required industrial space and would contain a main lobby access from 10th Street and a separate lobby for industrial tenants on 9th Street. To enhance the pedestrian experience, the landscaped open space would be located along 10th Street with a minimum depth of 15 feet. A five-foot-two-inch sidewalk widening along Queens Plaza South would also be provided, satisfying the requirement that adjacent sidewalks be built to the width of 15 feet. This will also help to coordinate a future crossing from Queens Plaza South and 10th Street up to Queensbridge Houses, where currently there are a number of barriers to clear accessibility and pedestrian paths from the north to the south. There are five 12-foot by 33-foot loading berths on the ground floor with access to dedicated freight elevators for the industrial tenants. The two curb cuts would be added on 9th Street, one at 19 feet four inches to provide the access to the loading berths, and then one would be a more standard 18-foot curb cut to provide access to the parking and the cellar. The location of the curb cuts on 9th Street is also intended to help manage the vehicular traffic and not impede our future pedestrian enhancing open spaces that are to the south. And the development will also contain 43 bike parking spaces, as required by zoning, to be accessed from 10th Street. Next slide, please. The second and third floors would be used for the required industrial space. A 28-foot floor to ceiling height is provided on the first two third floors to allow for the maximum amount of flexibility needed for any specialty mechanical equipment or additional HVAC needs in those spaces. And approximately 13,000 square foot terrace would be located on the third floor as well. Next slide, please. The upper floors would predominantly consist of office space, which are categorized as permitted and incentive uses. An eating and drinking establishment, which the applicant is interested in locating within the upper floors, is a permitted but not incentive use. And that would be allowed on the floors with the purple shading indicating a permitted use, but not on the floors with the only yellow shading, limited to incentive uses only. Next slide, please. And so, these sections looking east also have the red line that contains the maximum building envelope height at 330 feet, in addition to the 370 max height for the bulkhead. And you can also see the adjacency to the Queensborough Bridge overpass, and so, the project is also trying to create a better relationship to that bridge. Next slide, please. These are elevations taken from 9th Street. The proposed building would be rising again approximately 312 feet to the top of the roof. Next slide, please. This is an elevation looking south from Queens Plaza South. Next slide, please. And these are neighborhood character diagrams. The top one is looking south from Queens Plaza South. The Queensborough Bridge would then be behind that. On the bottom, you're looking north with the Queensborough Bridge ahead of you. Next slide, please. An additional character diagram. The top is looking west from 10th Street with the bridge on the right, and on the bottom, it's looking east from 10th Street. Next slide, please. The actions being requested in order to facilitate this new building is to create, but also utilize, the existing IBIA special permit with a series of text amendments. Next slide, please. Now, regarding the text amendment components, several updates to the text were added at the direction of City Planning, following lessons learned from previous IBIA projects, and to provide clarity to the provisions of the text. First, in order to seek the IBIA special permit, the project area needs to be mapped as an IBIA area. And so, this will actually be included as a new IBIA2 area being located in Queens. Next, the text amendments would also make the provisions of VR Section 7496 applicable to M14 zoning districts. Next slide, please. So, to apply the underlying height and setback regulations to developments in M14 districts and to allow the CPC to modify such regulations, the maximum height of the front wall within the initial 15-foot setback is 60 feet or four stories. The existing tax-permitted buildings within the current IBIA1 a higher base height to accommodate the loft-style buildings. In the case of the IBIA2 proposal, the development can in fact be accommodated by the underlying M14 bulk regulations in sky-exposure planes and does not require the same bulk release as the preceding IBIA1 projects. Next slide, please. Per DCP's direction, the minimum required square footage of horizontally contiguous industrial space would be reduced to 2,500 square feet within the new IBIA. According to industrial research undertaken by the department and interviews of industrial developers and property owners, including Greenpoint Manufacturing and Design Center, the 2,500 square foot is a useful base module for small industrial makers. This has also been reinforced by conversations with members of the LIC community. We have also received some feedback from some of the existing IBIA projects in Brooklyn that trying to provide some smaller spaces is also useful for small local makers. Next slide, please. Finally, with DCP's instruction, pardon me, revisions to reorganize provisions to align more closely with the standards in other CPC special permits, including a standardization of the order of provisions. So, for example, currently 7496 is organized into two special permits, one for the FAR increases and the other for parking and loading release. These are now consolidated into one special permit. Also, for reference, Public Plaza in 7496, it's been revised to publicly accessible open space. Public Plaza is generally a zoning term used in association with floor area bonuses, and so, by adding open space here, it's to achieve relief from height and setback regulations. The DCP believes that publicly accessible open space is more appropriate terminology. We certainly encourage the commission to take a look at the zoning language that's in their briefing packets and compare them side by side, since these smaller clarification changes are too numerous for us to call out everyone specifically. Next slide, please. The IBIA special permit is requested to increase the maximum FAR for specific industrial manufacturing and commercial uses. The special permit would increase the total allowable floor area by 22,471 square feet, an increase of approximately 4.5 FAR for eligible industrial, commercial uses. In conjunction with the special permit for an increase in FAR, the applicant also requests to modify the loading berth requirements, reducing from seven to five, and reducing the size of loading berths from 50 to 33 feet. This aligns more with the smaller box trucks that they, that these users would tend to be utilizing instead of the much larger trucks. The applicant is not seeking any height or setback relief or anything regarding accessory parking requirements. Next slide, please. The findings pursuant to 7496, including those not applicable as identified by the applicant, you can see them here before you. In order to grant additional floor area or any modifications to bulk, publicly accessible open space, or parking and loading regulations, the commission shall find the below findings as appropriate. And again, you will see in your briefing packets that some that are not seen as applicable here have been struck through. Next slide, please. Per the applicant, the development would provide modern in-demand office space while also preserving space for modern light industrial uses, reinforcing the industrial character of Long Island City, as well as the objectives of the industrial business zone. Remaining consistent with the New York Works Plan, this further establishes Long Island City as a commercial hub while leveraging LIC's industrial backbone. And per the applicant, the development would support job creation across the commercial office and industrial sectors while locating them relatively near transit and in walking distance of nearby housing development. And this ends my presentation, thank you.
Thanks for stepping in, Alexis, appreciate that. I also want to explain that the final set of proposed changes were zoning resolution cleanup. The IBIA text is relatively new, was mapped initially in Brooklyn, and when this proposal came forward, we realized that there was purely technical cleanup that would make the zoning resolution be more consistent and work more effectively as a document. We would be pleased to walk you through any of the changes, but since they were technical cleanup, at least for the initial presentation, we thought just to summarize the most significant of them, although even those are not particularly significant. So, with that, questions from the, questions from the commission? I see Commissioner Delauz.
Hi, thanks, thanks for the presentation. I remember when, obviously, we created this back in May of 2016, and I appreciate that, you know, I heard some of the, you know, kind of feedback from the- Excuse me, the current projects, if you will, mixed into the presentation. I would really appreciate a very detailed presentation to the commission on that feedback, prior, ideally, prior to this even coming back to us, because, you know, we created a whole new way of thinking about redevelopment in industrial areas and trying to use an incentive approach. And so, I just want to make sure that we're on the right track before we expand even further.
No, probably, and in particular because we have reached out to industrial advocates, and as Alexis noted, the Greenpoint Manufacturing and Design Center has been quite instrumental in shaping our thinking on this, and they are one of the acknowledged leaders in not just the running of the space, but thinking from a policy perspective. Commissioner Levin.
Yes, thank you, I, and thank you Alexis and Scott. I share Commissioner Delauz's desire to know quite a bit more about the experience that's been achieved with the three special permits that we've previously approved. So, I agree that it would be great to get a separate presentation, independent from this project, kind of reporting to us how they have worked out. I have a series of questions here about the effectiveness of the industrial space and how, extent to which industrial users have been consulted in its layout. It looks like fairly awkward space with building core going right through the middle, and the loading berths look a little bit awkward, are they gonna have to back into the loading berths? And then, my final question has to do, this will open up new possibilities for this special permit if we're now allowing it in an M14 district, which has a significant amount of additional floor area available if you're able to convert what's essentially the community facility floor area to commercial. So, I'd be interested in knowing the broader, how many, how much M14 is there in IBZs around the city? And what other potential might there be for future applications of this sort? I know that this one is focused just on its own neighborhood, but I think we certainly know that the development community keeps a keen eye out for opportunities, and I think we should anticipate where else this one might get used. So, those are all my questions packed together, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernie.
Oh, thank you. Alexis, could you just explain for me the difference between permitted and incentive uses in this context?
Certainly, yes. So, we have a structure where, overall, we're getting up to that 6.5 maximum FAR, but the, there are required uses that still align with the base two FAR of the M14 district. And so, those essentially have to be satisfied in order to then unlock any of the incentive uses that are here on-site. But there is a fair amount of overlap, because in an M14, of course, office is also permitted. But in this case, we have, I'm just getting into it in my notes.
But what's the incentive, why that word?
So, I believe the incentive uses are the parts that are sort of unlocked in that overall 6.5.
But who's being incentivized, that's what confuses me, that, using that term. I understand that if you increase, if you got the M14 and you can increase to 6.5, you get the extra floor area, but why isn't that then all permitted? What does incentive mean?
The notion is that by providing the industrial use, by setting aside the industrial use, you are then allowed to provide more of certain uses where the economics are more favorable. And so, that is an attempt to have a special permit that will actually lead to the construction of the building. And Alexis-
Okay, so it's, but essentially, essentially, it's all permitted then? Once you change the zone- the zoning?
Alexis, do you want to explain the uses that are stripped away because they are not exactly the same?
Yes, so some of the uses that do not fall into the incentivized uses would be, for instance, any sort of food and beverage type of uses. So that's why the, when you are looking at the section that demonstrates where the permitted and incentive uses are divided, the sort of rooftop bar that the developers are considering, it really falls into the permitted use that would not be considered an incentivized use.
Okay.
So the incentivized use is a subset of the permitted uses and tends to strip out eating and drinking establishments, which otherwise would be permitted.
I get it. Okay, good. I apologize for my ignorance. Thank you very much.
Oh, heartily. Let's see, Commissioner Roddick.
Hi, thank you, Alexis. I have a question, a minor question on, on the bike parking, you know, acknowledging that they're meeting their requirements, but also that we're in a new day in many ways and that, you know, as a result of the pandemic, we've seen an incredible increase in the need for our bicycle infrastructure and people using their bikes and recognizing and hoping that we're able to sustain and grow and maintain that over time. So, you know, wondering if there, you know, you think in a new world that is sufficient and if the developer, you know, might be open to rethinking that or incorporating, you know, the, the alternative is making sure that there are freight elevators for people to bring their bikes up to their spaces and, you know, that we're able to accommodate just a much larger number of people who might want to use that form of transportation.
We can, we can certainly have RXR speak to you about their strategy here and if they're able to be flexible with it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Well, then-
Chair, Chair, you're a bit muffled. Can you just turn up your volume a bit?
Certainly. And I will, for the next session, use my headphones. I was just checking to see if there were any other comments from commissioners. Then I'll note that today is that solicited day, September 14th, when the ULA time clock again begins ticking. And so we can say that this project is now certified.
Thank you so much.
And so speaking of certifications, items two through nine are agenda, on our agenda, are certifications that have been presented at prior review sessions. I will read through them, but we're not going to have them presented again. I will ask the commissioners, though, if, if there's something that, you know, sparks your memory, that you had a question about a certain item, you can, you know, raise your hand in the, in the Zoom and we will hear it and then, you know, follow up with you. So I'm going to read through all the, the items and just so that they're here on the record. So item two is 214-32 Hillside Avenue rezoning, a zoning map and zoning tax amendment in Queens Community District 13. It was presented on August 3rd. Item three is 4201 28th Avenue rezoning, a zoning map and zoning tax amendment in Queens Community District 1. I will note that Commissioner Ram Peshad has indicated that he is recused and this was presented on August 17th. Item four is the Queens 7 Parking Lot, a site selection and acquisition in Queens Community District 7, and it was presented on August 31st. The fifth item on our agenda is the Auburn East, a UDOT designation and project approval, zoning map and zoning tax amendments in Queens Community District 14, and it was presented on August 17th. The sixth item on our agenda is the Court Theater, a special permit and zoning tax amendment in Manhattan Community District 5. It was presented on August 3rd. Item seven is the Harlem, East Harlem Urban Renewal Plan, an amendment to an existing urban renewal plan in Manhattan Community Districts 10 and 11. It was presented on August 17th. Item eight is the 9114 Fifth Avenue rezoning, the zoning map and zoning tax amendments in Brooklyn Community District 10. This was presented on August 31st. Item nine is the 737 Fourth Avenue rezoning, zoning map and zoning tax amendments in Brooklyn Community District 7. I'll note that Commissioner Delaouz has indicated that she was recused and this was presented on August 17th. So the above listed, Agenda items two through nine are now certified.
And I'll just remind the commission that we adopted for the month of August and early September, the practice of presenting the information, presenting the projects to the commission, but we chose not to certify them at the time so that we would not in any way interfere with community boards having the entirety of their normal time to be able to review these projects. Any questions from the commission? Okay, Ben Ryan, on to the rest of the business.
Okay. Moving on to our pre-hearing items. Agenda item number 10 is the DeKalb Commons, a UDOT designation, project approval and disposition of sitting on property in Brooklyn Community District 3. This item was heard on September 2nd in the public meeting and the hearing is being continued on, on September 16th due to issues with the notice requirements for that hearing. Seeing no questions on that, moving on to item 11 on the agenda, a pre-hearing review of zoning map and zoning tax amendment in Queens Community District 7. And our presenter is Kai Kung Yang. Kai Kung, are you there?
Hi, you saw me waving, but you didn't see the voice with it. Good afternoon, commissioners. The Special Flushing Waterfront District comes before you as a pre-hearing item. It has been a while, so I will do a bit of recap of the project during this pre-hearing. FWRA LLC is seeking a zoning map amendment and zoning tax amendment to implement a comprehensive plan to redevelop approximately 29 acres of underutilized and environmentally challenged waterfront area in the downtown Flushing neighborhood of Queens Community District 7. This application is submitted by three developers that have come together to submit these proposed actions as one LLC. The United Group and FNT Group are local developers who have several developments in the Flushing area and throughout Queens. YNG is an overseas development group with their team based in New York. Next slide. Located in Flushing, Queens, the project area is two blocks west from the heart of downtown Flushing and is between Flushing Creek and College Point Boulevard. Two blocks east is Main Street, the main thoroughfare and transportation hub of downtown where the seven terminates at Main Street and Roosevelt. Next slide. As stated during certification, the proposed actions of this application are rooted in two decades of planning efforts in downtown Flushing and stems from the collaborative efforts between public and private entities. Building on all the efforts from 1993 through 2004 in creating a comprehensive plan for the growth and sustainability of downtown Flushing, the nonprofit Flushing Willetts Point Corona Local Development Corporation received a 1.5 million grant under the New York State Brownfield Opportunity Area Program to produce the BOA nomination study in 2010. This is a concerted effort and targeted way to strategize on the redevelopment of these vacant and underutilized properties so close to downtown Flushing. In 2014, the LDC partnered with DCP to prepare report documents for the BOA study and to create a master plan known as the Flushing Waterfront Revitalization Plan, also known as the BOA Master Plan. The Master Plan's vision statement sought to create opportunities for revitalization the recommendations intended to facilitate new mixed-use buildings, creation of a new public walkways, and open space along the waterfront and extension of pedestrian and vehicular circulation systems from downtown to the waterfront. In 2017, the final draft report of the BOA report and its master plan was completed and in 2018, it received official BOA designation. The proposed application was submitted to serve as the mechanism to accomplish the goals of the BOA's Master Plan, recommending the zoning map and tax amendment, including the creation of a special district. Next slide. The project area, bound in red, is approximately 29 acres, generally bound by the 40th Road to the south, College Point Boulevard to the east, extension of 26th Avenue westward towards Flushing Creek and Flushing Creek to the west. The surrounding area is characterized by a diverse mix of residential, commercial, and manufacturing industrial land uses and building types. Main Street and Roosevelt Avenue host heavily trafficked commercial retail and office uses with large floor plates. West of Main Street, Print Street is a heavily trafficked secondary corridor, an area of similar commercial and retail storefronts as well as mixed-use buildings. A C42 district covers mainly downtown Flushing. The C42 that covers the area west of Main Street allows a maximum residential FIR of 2.43, maximum commercial FIR of 3.4, and maximum community facility FIR of 4.8. A M31 district covers about a 6% portion of the product area as a legacy of previously industrial uses. Next slide. Developments are taking advantage of the full FIR allowance to create full mixed-use 12 to 17-story buildings containing retail on the ground floor, professional offices and community facilities, which include medical offices on the second and third floors and residential units above. Revest mixed-use developments that include retail, office, hotel, residential, and commercial uses are advancing westward from downtown Flushing over the past decade. Flushing has established itself as having its own unique economic development as compared to the traditional economic development known to New York City. Active retail and commercial space is not only happening at the ground floor level, but also in the cellar or in every corner a development allows. Projects have thrived with mixed-use formula that is unique to Flushing. During the 2008 Great Ugesession, the Flushing area was identified as one of the neighborhoods to continue thriving economically. The number of businesses in Flushing grew by 37.6% between 2000 and 2009 compared to 5.7% in the rest of the city, with retail trade, accommodation, and food services and construction accounting for nearly 29% of all area jobs. Flushing has and continues to maximize economic opportunities a development allows. Next slide. As identified in the BOA report, the project area has several limitations that prevent well-planned and well-coordinated outcomes. Some of today's constraints include an outdated waterfront active plan created over 20 years ago. The WAP requires a 20-feet-wide shore public walkway along the waterfront, half the citywide requirement today. At 20 feet wide, the current waterfront requirements are too narrow and is not enough to create meaningful open space for the public. In addition, the visual corridors and upline connections do not support public circulation throughout the waterfront area and the existing sidewalks are too narrow for pedestrian circulation. Next slide. Developments within the project area must also follow the special regulations applying around major airports. All the sites within the project area are constrained on how high they can go by the airport height limit set by the FAA. The 150 feet above mean sea level means buildings cannot go much higher than about 13 stories, including building bulkhead. The project area has also varying topography elevation as shown on the contour map, as one site is lower than another and the area slopes down from College Point Boulevard to the water. Next slide. The project area is not only constrained by the air, but also from the water's edge with DC jurisdictional boundaries and wetland areas. The DC jurisdictional limits the amount of impervious areas in the development area and affects the waterfront walkway design. Properties would not be able to develop on identified wetlands and all buildings must be designed for resiliency to allow for people to get close to the water's edge while also protecting critical infrastructure during a storm event. As mentioned about the topography, some sites are lower than the others in the project area. The shore public walkway would have to be elevated to avoid flood siting and would have to be designed at a 14-foot design flood elevation. Next slide. All of these constraints mentioned were analyzed and its impacts noted in the BOA study. The BOA study allowed for a diverse and meaningful public engagement for two years with city planning leading the community events. Stakeholders, including residents, business owners, property owners, local community groups, elected officials, and agency representatives. The proposal of the Special Flushing Waterfront District allows the recommendation of the BOA Master Plan and is intended to facilitate the revitalization and coordinated redevelopment of former brownfields and vacant sites with new mixed-use develop, mixed-use development intended to transform the project area so they contribute to the growth of Flushing. This included the expansion of a new public walkway and open space along the Flushing waterfront, establishing physical and visual public access connections to and along Flushing Creek and coordinating an internal circulation of a private street network, allowing walkable sized blocks to improve the functionality of the special district. Next slide. The project area, bound in yellow, consists of two waterfront blocks, Block 4963 and Block 5066. There are four development sites. Sites 1, 2, 3, and 4 are located on Block 4963. Development Site 1 on lots 7, 8, and 9 contains approximately 165,000 square feet of lot area. It is currently vacant and used for construction staging activities. Previously, the site contained a single-story warehouse building. Development Site 2 on Lot 65 contains approximately 138,000 square feet of lot area and is also vacant. Previously, it was a single-story Asian wholesale supermarket facility. This site has recently pulled its permits to start cleanup work as acquired by the BOA. Development Site 3 on Lot 85 contains approximately 175,000 square feet of lot area and is improved as a parking lot and temporary construction staging area. Historically, it used to be a woodworking facility and later a patrolling facility. Development Site 4 on Lots 212 and 249 contains approximately 47,000 square feet of lot area and is vacant land. The most recent previous use was a scrapyard and prior concrete plant. Development sites that are currently vacant are primed for development. Lot 75 and Lot 200 are potential sites that are analyzed in the project area but are not development sites. Lot 75 contains approximately 30,000 square feet of lot area and is improved to the one-story building material storage building. Previously, it was an auto sales business. Lot 200 contains approximately 120,000 square feet of lot area and contains U-Haul's four-story T-shaped shipping and storage facility. Prior to it being U-Haul, it was a furniture and zipper manufacturing company. The U-Haul site contains a clock tower cupola visually prominent along the waterfront. The two other out parcels within the project area include Lot 1 and Lot 210. Lot 1 contains below-grade Con Ed infrastructure and Lot 210 is currently a vacant one-story auto shop repair shop. Lot 5066 contains the Skyview Park development. The shore public walkway was completed in early 2019 and is developed along the development's waterfront using existing WAP regulations. The total lot area of the project area combined is approximately 1.5 million square feet. Next slide. The applicant FWRA LLC seeks to propose a zoning map and tax amendment action to implement the recommendations laid out by the BOA Master Plan. The existing C42 district would be mainly retained with the northern portion of the special district changing from the existing C42 and M31 districts to an M12 or 71 district. The proposed mixed-use district would allow existing light industrial uses to remain and expand while allowing redevelopment with residential and commercial uses. Commercial FIR in the proposed M12 is 3.0. The rezoning would follow the bulk and WAP provisions of the special district. In addition, the rezoning would bring the existing storage facility into compliance. In addition, the zoning would bring the existing storage facility into compliance. I'm sorry, storage facility site into conformance. Next slide. The special district includes three sub-districts with a focus on Subdistrict A and B. Subdistrict A would be subject to a zoning map amendment change. The change in zoning from C four-two and M three-one districts to a mixed-use residential of M one-two or seven-one would increase new housing potential and require the sub-district to establish an M I H area in this location. Development Site Four, as well as the U-Haul facility, is located in Subdistrict A. Subdistrict B would be retaining the C four-two zoning, and there are no changes to its bulk requirements. The max allowable FAR would stay at four-point-eight. This sub-district is subject to the private street network, which allows for breaking up of the massing of the development on large blocks to create walkable blocks avoiding massive blank wall development. This sub-district contains the development sites one, two, and three. The previously discussed Skyview Park is identified and included as part of Subdistrict C. Minimal changes are made in this sub-district with proposed special district regulation reducing parking requirements, essentially allowing residential parking to be balanced over to commercial parking. The special district would modify underlying zoning regulations related to height, setbacks, use, and parking are established to allow for greater flexibility in the type and shape of future development. Next slide. The existing WAP would be replaced by improved provisions to increase the amount of open space provided by new waterfront developments. The recommended requirements would increase the minimum width of shore public walkway from twenty feet to current citywide forty-feet standard, establish modified requirements for four upline connections and three visual corridor locations. Next slide. Aligning with upline connections, a private street network would be established. The private street network would improve pedestrian and vehicular circulation by providing new opportunities of movement between developments and provide additional areas of active ground floor frontages in the form of commercial, community facility, and residential lobby space and would contribute to an active waterfront. All private streets would be thirty-four feet wide curb-to-curb with thirteen-foot sidewalks on each side for a total of sixty feet. The special district would allow for the phasing of the private street network to allow for the sites to be constructed independently. As stated at certification, the developments would be constructed essentially as bathtubs with programming below-street level, so the street network really works as a roof to the cellar and basement below. This publicly accessible private street network would work like a PAA easement that provides twenty-four-hour access to the streets and sidewalks unless closed for repairs, which require notifying DCP and DOT. The developers would be responsible for building and maintaining the streets with a restrictive declaration required from each owner. The streets must be built DOT standards, and plans for alignment and coordination must be reviewed by both FDNY and DOT. In addition, the special district text has specific requirements that require each developer to come before the chairperson for a certification review for development of the streets during an interim and final condition. Further, the developers will not be able to pull a TCO or FCO until their approved designs are built out and a restrictive declaration is recorded that provides operational specifications as to roadway markings, traffic signs, and parking, street maintenance obligations, maintenance and capital repair reserves, monitoring agreement with the security company that will inspect all improved built-out private streets for compliance with operational specifications four times a day, every day of the year, and a towing contract to immediately remove any illegal parked vehicles. These safeguards have in place to make sure the private street network within the special district clearly states who is responsible for what for the improved pedestrian and vehicular circulation. Next slide. The proposed actions would establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area within only the Subdistrict A portion of the special district. This is the only portion of the special district that is getting a rezoning from a commercial and manufacturing district into a mixed-use residential district. A range of seventy-five to ninety affordable units are proposed for development Site Four. The AMI for Queen's CD seven is approximately fifty-four thousand dollars, and specifically in this area's census tract, Flushing's AMI is approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars. Next slide. In addition, special district text addresses new height and setback requirements. Subdistrict A will be permitted to reach a maximum height of two-hundred feet, and Subdistrict B would be permitted to reach a maximum height of two-hundred-and-forty-five feet pursuant to a CPC chairperson certification that will be created as part of the special district. Review and coordination with the Port Authority and FAA are mandatory requirements within the text for the certification. The special district retains generally the existing C four-two bulk and underlying regulations with modifications to height and setback to provide for the private streets and upline connections. Primary and secondary street frontages are designated with each street frontage having specific base height and setback requirements. In addition, flexible articulation of either recess or projection along the street walls are required to ensure meaningful breakup of the building facade. Transparency standards on the ground floor are consistent with the underlying requirements of today, which include fifty percent of the surface area at ground floor level and screening requirements. Lastly, throughout the district, there would be a general overall reduction of parking requirements. Next slide. Since the completion of the Boa Report, city planning has been working closely with the developers of the waterfront sites to facilitate the recommendations of the report. Approval of the proposed actions would create the developments of Site One, two, three, and four. The modifications to the bulk requirements of the special district and private street network would allow the development sites to be split into two development pads, breaking potentially massive structures that would create blank street walls. Together, the development site would produce approximately three million square footage of development. In Subdistrict B, where the C four-two zoning is retained, a total of approximately one-point-three-five million square feet of residential uses with one-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty market rate dwelling units are being proposed. In Subdistrict A, where a new mixed-use residential zoning is being proposed, approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-nine units are being proposed with a range of seventy-five to ninety units specific to affordable housing. Commercial uses would include office, retail, and hotel use. Approximately one-point-four million square foot in built area include one-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty hotel rooms, approximately twenty-two-thousand square feet of community facility space, and one-thousand-five-hundred parking spaces in total. A hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand square feet of open space is proposed together on four development sites. As a potential site, if U-Haul were to enlarge, they would be required to provide a shore public walkway. The special district would then have in total a hundred-and-sixty-thousand square feet of open space. Next slide. Next slide. Development Site One is owned by United Group, a local developer with projects in Flushing and in Queens. The mixed-use proposal would be developed with four residential towers on top of commercial podiums with approximately five-hundred-thousand square feet of commercial use, which includes office, retail, and hotel use. The hotel portion would have approximately three-hundred-and-fifty-three keys. The proposal would also include approximately four-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand residential square footage with five-hundred-and-forty-six market rate units and four-thousand-three-hundred square feet of community facility use. Approximately five-hundred-and-ten parking spaces would be provided across the commercial podium, and approximately forty-three-thousand square foot would be dedicated to enhancing the waterfront, including a shore public walkway, new trees, sidewalks, benches, and playgrounds. Next slide. This schematic proposal illustrates the proposed ground floor plan of Site One. Pink indicates retail, which encompasses almost the entirety of the ground floor with residential and hotel lobby entrances shared throughout the space, shown in light blue and light brown. Next slide. Development Site Two is owned by the Y and G Group, an overseas development group with a development team based in New York. The mixed-use proposal would be developed with two residential towers on the west portion of the private street and one hotel tower east of the private street with a maximum height of two-hundred-and-thirty-nine feet. Approximately four-hundred square feet of commercial use would include retail and hotel use. The hotel portion would have approximately three-hundred keys. The proposal also includes approximately four-hundred-thousand square feet residential square footage with three-hundred-and-sixty-eight market rate units and thirteen-thousand-five-hundred square feet of community facility use. Approximately three-hundred below-grade parking spaces would be provided and approximately thirty-seven-thousand square of open space within the shore public walkway. The rendering on the right shows a two-thousand-square-foot open space plaza. This particular development designed a shared private street where no curbs would differentiate between plaza and circulation into both east and west buildings. Next slide. This slide illustrates the ground floor of the Y and G site. The hotel tower is shown on the right with the open plaza out front adjacent to the private street, and the residential towers are located to the left. Blue indicates retail and red indicates the residential lobby entrances. The dark orange indicates special programming for commercial uses. Next slide. This site slopes down to the waterfront, so even though the ground floor was on the previous slide, you would walk down on the slope to the waterfront with different programming of the building. Retail is lined along the waterfront to activate the open space. Next slide. Proposed development Site Three is owned by F and T Group, a Flushing-based development group who has several large developments in the downtown Flushing area, including the sixteen-story, four-building mixed-use residential and commercial development named Tangram across the street and almost complete with construction. The development would be developed with three towers. A prominent curved residential tower would be located at the waterfront, shown on the right rendering. Below the curve in the base, the program would hold hotel use, shown on the left rendering. Another residential tower and a commercial tower would be located east of the private street, which you can see on the right towards the back. Approximately four-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand square feet of commercial use include office, retail, and hotel use. The hotel portion would have approximately five-hundred-and-seven hotel rooms. The proposal also includes approximately four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand residential square footage with five-hundred-and-seven market rate units and one-thousand-six-hundred square foot of community facility use. Approximately five-hundred-and-fifty-three below-grade parking spaces would be provided. Development Site Three would provide approximately forty-two-thousand square feet of open space within the shore public walkway. Next slide. This schematic proposal illustrates the proposed ground floor plan of Site Three. The purple indicates hotel use on the western portion of the site, and the orange indicates commercial retail on the eastern portion of the site. The blue indicates office use and is illustrated as the office lobby that would rise at the standalone office tower. The residential lobbies are located on both the eastern and western portion of the site. This site is one of the two developments that are proposing banquet-like all-in-one facilities within their program. Next slide. Proposed development Site Four is also being developed by F and T Group. Proposed Site Four, located closest to the northern boundary of the project area, would be developed with two towers on a single podium with a maximum height of two-hundred feet. This mixed-use proposal would be mainly residential use and contain approximately seventeen-thousand square feet of retail, commercial use. Approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand square feet of residential use with a total of three-hundred-four dwelling units and a range of seventy-five to ninety affordable units are proposed to be provided along with the two-thousand-four-hundred square feet of community facility use with one-hundred-and-fifty below-grade parking spaces. Development Site Four would provide approximately fifteen-thousand square feet of publicly accessible open space within the shore public walkway. The rendering on the right shows the shore public walkway looking nice. Next slide. The ground floor indicates commercial use in pink, residential lobby is in yellow, and community facility use in dark purple. Access to the waterfront from retail frontage is proposed. Next slide. These plans are an accumulation of years of engagement between city planning, developers, and the community, carefully guiding developments to the waterfront. The proposed actions of the application seek predominantly to modifying the building envelope, creating a private street network, and rationalizing development that would otherwise occur in this area with similar density to bring together the goals of the Boa's master plan of creating new public walkways and open space along the waterfront, establishing physical and visual public access connections to and along the creek, and coordinating internal circulation via private street network to improve functionality through walkable blocks. Next slide. This project was certified on December sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and referred out to the community board and borough president. The community board voted to approve the project, thirty in favor, eight opposed, and one abstention with conditions. They have indicated this project has been a long time in the making and that some of the land use committee members have been part of the effort to plan for downtown Flushing since nineteen eighty-nine. The fifteen conditions address community space, environmental concerns related to Flushing Creek, and potential green infrastructure, allotment of affordable housing to community board seven residents, traffic concerns, transportation issues related to MTA's seven-line expansion, schools, and public conditions at the waterfront. The condition to request free community facility space specifically for community and upcoming civic organizations that could represent the resident population of downtown Flushing is in response to the opposition that stated that they were not given notice of meeting on the project. Next slide. On March twelfth, the acting Queens Borough President recommended disapproval of the project. Conditions of our disapproval included commitment for prevailing wages, employment of union labor, commitment to additional affordable housing units, and location of a school in downtown Flushing area by the SDA. Both during the community board and borough president's hearings, questions were raised about the environmental analysis. The project followed a CECL protocol, and the analysis in the EAS did not exceed impact thresholds presented in the CECL technical manual, and a negative declaration was issued. Next slide. This special Flushing waterfront district application continues a duelist journey here as it proposes to bring a new coordinated neighborhood plan and updated WAP and open space that will bring much-needed improvements in public access to this underutilized area of Flushing. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate Young, for such a comprehensive and also clear refresher course on this project that we had seen quite a while ago. At this point, I would ask if there are any questions or comments from commissioners. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Well, I think the points raised by the borough president are not only valid, but obviously questions that need to be addressed by the developers. I don't know if we know the answer to this question. I'm just curious as to whether or not it is envisioned that the developers would pay for these infrastructure costs or are city capital dollars envisioned to go into this project, assuming it were to proceed?
So, when you say infrastructure, in the borough president's letter as well as the community board's letter, they did mention the MTA's seven-line expansion. That project had been packaged. It's my understanding that it's been packaged and ready to go. It was a seventy-million-dollar capital program to expand the staircase, to actually create a new staircase between Roosevelt and Print Street, creating new openings at the intersection of Main Street and Roosevelt and other improvements. And it's my understanding that the package itself was ready to go with construction bids, you know, ready to go. But because of what's happening with the pandemic, that is being reevaluated. So, that's the MTA infrastructure portion. Are you talking about the infrastructures within the development site?
Yeah, yeah. That, I mean, seventy million would seem to be a drop in the bucket. uh, compared to what it would take to, you know, revitalize, um, that entire area along the waterfront.
So, in terms of the, the site itself, um, each development would be required to undergo infrastructure cleanup, such, I mean, well, the site cleanup itself, which I, which I consider infrastructure, um, because they're required to by the BOA. Um, they're also, um, they also have, um, uh, uh, they will be providing infrastructure, um, below the, the street. They're actually providing the private street network, as you know. Um, and they'll be providing, um, a newly privately-funded sanitary sewer line that will connect to the existing, um, existing system that's there now as developments continue, as develop happens one site at a time.
And for those who don't live in this world every day, BOA is the brownfield opportunity of these areas, so in environmental remediation.
Mm-hmm.
So, it sounds like it's, it's, it's the developer's, uh, responsibility, uh, exclusively, at least, you know, uh, within the site itself.
Right, within the project site itself, yes. Um, but the, the items that were raised, um, as a whole, um, is more of a, a city effort.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lloves.
Um, you, you touched on, on one piece, obviously, which was, which was the BOA. Um, and I, it would be helpful, um, for, for the applicants to just, um, you know, speak to the cleanup, the details of the cleanup, um, and, um, especially since this was, this plan was partly informed by a, a prior, uh, BOA planning grant. Um, and it would be helpful to know which aspects of the plan are consistent with that original BOA applications and which parts are not. Um, and, you know, I'm, I'm assuming they're applying for the tax credits as part of the BOA.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's part of how government is supporting the redevelopment of, of this, you know, of this proposal should have moved forward. Um, I guess, I, I guess I would ask the development team, because I, there's obviously been a lot, uh, about this project in the press. Um, and it would be helpful to know what, if they could address directly, uh, the criticisms that not only are in the borough president's critique, but also some that we've been hearing in the press about the overall density, um, and, you know, whether or not this is consistent with a vision that, that the community has, and how they would str- strive to bridge that gap or address it.
Um, absolutely, they'll, they will be able to, um, provide that explanation. But I also want to clarify that in, within the special district itself, um, the density of the C four-two, as it is existing today, is the same. So, essentially, the, the density of the maximum allowable FAR is four point eight. And specifically in sub-districtry where the development sites one, two, and three are, um, the special district is essentially, uh, molding the buildings and allowing the, um, the massing to be broken up so that there is this pedestrian and vehicular circulation that the community had, um, requested. A part of, um, and I think back in certification, Commissioner Levin had, um, mentioned the Flushing West study, neighborhood study, a part of the criticism that, um, the Flushing West study had with the, um, they, the, Flushing cannot take any more density. So, within taking that, um, into consideration, the special district was really cultivated, um, and structured and masked, so the C four-two density remains the same. And, um, that there's actually more of, um, a broken, uh, actually creating more block fronts. So, there is this, um, pedestrian path from downtown Flushing into the wire, which is also one of the, um, one of the concerns that, um, was raised during the Flushing West study. That there's, there, there needed to be a more, um, access to open space. So, um, I will explain the portion, but I'll have the development team explain some more.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Thank you for the presentation. Uh, I had a couple of questions. Since the, uh, borough president's, uh, meeting back in March, has the developer responded in writing to both her concerns as well as the community board's concerns?
Yes, um, the, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm not sure about the borough president, but I do know that they have addressed, um, the community board's concerns. And, uh, they'll be able to speak further on that on Wednesday, but I believe they have, um, they have responded to about three-fourths of the concerns, right?
And I have another question. With regards to these safeguards that you mentioned, uh, during the presentation, which agency is going to make sure that that's taken care of? Is it city planning? Is it department of buildings? Can you clarify that?
It's a combination.
Make sure they adhere to it?
Right, so because they're, because they are bound by the restrictive deck, um, D O B would be involved, D C P is involved, D O T and F D N Y would be reviewers and would be involved. Um, so there are several agencies that have these, um, oversight to the safeguards.
Uh, I just have one last question.
Sure.
And, and maybe the design team, when they come in, they'll, they'll explain to more. With regards to the waterfront design, uh, I didn't see anything in the presentation package about bike paths or any other dog park or, you know, what you, you know, any other experience or activities that can be, I guess, implemented. Is there a possibility of that being put into this design?
Um, the dog park is a great idea, um, and, um, you, definitely the applicant team will, um, respond to it. Um, I'm not too certain about the bike, bike lanes, but there are, um, on the private streets, um, access to bike racks, as well as, um, there would be no parking on the streets. So, it would be purely just a private street network, public, private street, publicly accessible, um, street where pedestrians could, um, visit.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Um, yes, actually, Commissioner Rampershad was working on the same question that's forming in my mind, and that is about the, um, design process underlying the waterfront public access area. We're shown sort of nice drawings of what it might look like, um, but I don't see in the text very much detail about, um, how it gets designed. Is there a review function where they have to bring a design to D C P for approval? Is there an overall, and because it's going to be constructed in segments, um, it's important to know that they're going to relate well to each other. We've had experiences along the, um, Brooklyn waterfront where things look a little bit choppy. Um, how much attention is city planning going to give to the design of this, um, waterfront so that it really works as a coherent whole?
You're absolutely right, that they would have to come, for each of the development sites, they would have come, they would have to come to D C P for, um, a, a waterfront cer- certification review on the chair. They would be working with the urban design team and our team to make sure that the design of each parcel aligns, as well as, within the text, there is, um, a segment that indicates interim condition and final condition. Um, these are also safeguards to make sure that development site one and two work together and that the elevation levels are not like zero to like, you know, a hundred. Um, so there are these safeguards that we have within the text and, um, uh, in our zoning regulation, um, protocols that make sure that it, it won't be, you know, mismatched, mishaps.
Okay. So, so is there, oh, excuse me, let me get that. Um, is there a conceptual plan for the waterfront already?
Yes, there is. And, um,
So, so you're, they're starting from a, a basic roadmap of how the,
Exactly, exactly. We've reviewed it with them, but on Wednesday, um, uh, the applicant team will have the master landscape planner, um, go in to deal with the detail with it.
Oh, good, that will be good. If we're going to get a presentation from, or just from the landscape planner of, of the whole? That'd be terrific. Okay, then, so on the, uh, actually, two more questions.
If I could, if I could, Commissioner Levin, just on that point, before you go ahead, just to let you know, we, um, know that in New York, we have a largely as-of-right approach, not a site plan review approach to land use. And I would say with the exception of waterfront public access areas and POPs, where we get, we, the department, are very, very heavily involved. Um, and when I say the "we," it includes the borough office, which understands the projects, the borough, but with very heavy input from our waterfront and open space division, which has a more comprehensive citywide view, and then also our urban design team. And we've also evolved the program over time. I think if we look at what will be presented here on Wednesday at the public hearing, it reflects, um, the challenges that we saw with an earlier iteration of our waterfront access where it was much meaner. I, um, I take your point that, um, as a waterfront is built out, we, we, in the public sector, don't control that you start with one parcel and then move to the next, then the next. And so there are interim conditions. Um, but what we can do through our certifications is make sure that we have edge conditions that meet up. We also do, um, as developments, multi-phase developments, um, come online, we frequently will work to provide temporary access as a second phase is being developed. And so I want to assure you that when it comes to the waterfront, it is prob- and the design and the utility of the open space, it is probably the area of the city where the, the city, the department lavishes a lot of intense attention.
Well, that's, that's certainly true, but we also want these permissions to endure so that, uh, whoever comes after us, um, is required to maintain the same degree of public focus on the quality of the space. Um, I had two other topics, one related to the waterfront and one related to the streetscape, but if, if I've had my time and you want to call it.
No, 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 please go ahead.
Okay, so my other, my next question has to do with how this, um, how these projects relate to the, um, environmental efforts surrounding Flushing Creek. Um, some of the written testimony we've already received refers to the, what is it? The Flushing Creek Vision Plan, or does this, I'm getting the name wrong. But there is, um, obviously, a lot of environmental attention being paid to the quality of the waterways surrounding the site. Um, and there's an issue related to the outflow of, um, I don't know, is it, uh, stormwater or other outflow from this site? How is this site going to be the best possible neighbor to, um, a cleaned-up waterfront?
Right, so as part of the development site's design, um, of the building, um, there are stormwater management methods that the applicant team will speak to further, um, because they know this is an issue that, that was raised by the community, um, further Wednesday. But they do, um, have, uh, green, green roofs, um, permeable pavement, in, um, infiltration soil and green spaces, and underground treatment devices within the site that they're planning already. Um, so they, they'll go into that a little bit more deeper, but that's one of their strategies, several of their strategies to manage the stormwater that's been raised and, um, uh, do their part to actually not contribute to, um, the environment concerns.
Good, well, so I'll look forward to hearing more about that. Um, and then my final question has to do with, um, streetscapes. I think we raised this a little bit as a question at the review session when this was first certified. But I noticed in particular, there's a section in the text about special provisions for flank walls, and it seems to have a menu of, um, streetscape improvements, um, plantings, benches, bicycle racks, tables and chairs, wall treatments. Um, but it says that only one of those need be required. It says one or more, the street walls have to be treated, these are large street walls, obviously, have to be treated by one or more of the following visual mitigation elements. They're not all required, some, as I read that text, it looked as if these streetscapes could be kind of barren.
I can, let, let me take a look at the text and get back to you on, um, on the specificity of the language, but it, the intention is not to have flank walls. So, if there's an error in the "and" and the "or," um, thank you for catching that.
Double, yeah, just double check that we're going to get a whole lot of this nice stuff, um, to break up what are going to be pretty massive walls.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And we've already seen from the existing development there just how deadly the walk to the waterfront can be along the back of house, loading and parking entry.
Exactly right, and if you can get away with just slapping in a bike rack or two and calling it done. I mean, I don't, I don't mean to imply that this, given the, the importance and scale of this development, that that's what any responsible developer would, would plan to do, but, um, we want to be sure that's not, doesn't become an option, a cheap way out.
Got it.
Agreed. Commissioner Levin.
Oh, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to follow up on, uh, Commissioner Levin's, um, question about the waterfront public access. So, once it's completed, who will be managing that space?
The developers will be managing that space.
So, what measures do we have to ensure that it doesn't become privatized, that the public access is maintained?
There are restrictive declarations, similar, similar to how I, um, described the private street, um, private street, probably accessible network, um, in slide fourteen. Um, the waterfront walk, um, the waterfront would have the similar safeguards. So, they would have to be, um, they, first of all, would have restrictive declarations. Um, and they would not be able to pull any TCOs unless, um, all of these provisions were met. Um, D C P would be involved, um, as the chair mentioned, they would be reviewing all the waterfront certs, um, including interim and final conditions. Um, D O T would be involved, D O B would be involved, um, F D N Y espe- as well, because they need to coordinate access within and getting to the waterfront.
Well, that's one, too many agencies. Who's really going to be responsible for policing this? Because it will fall between stools, right? Nobody will really pay attention. And they'll say, well, it was another agency, it was D O B's responsibility. No, it was D C P's responsibility, and then, you know, the place will deteriorate and become privatized. I'm sorry to be pessimistic, but.
I mean, I think that we could have, uh, a sort of more robust discussion of how, I mean, these, these are waterfront, are waterfront regulations and the way that they are implemented. I think that we could do a follow-up. This sort of explains all of that, because a- actually, s- um, in some cases, Parks Department is involved in, in approving the design because there is, there are sometimes provisions where they can take over maintenance of this, if, if they're sort of the maintenance of last resort, um, kind of thing. So, I think that it might be a good idea for us to coordinate a sort of robust, uh, response to this for you.
I'll also, I'll also know, Commissioner Levin, um, that, um, we find the neighborhood associations and the community boards to be, um, very vigilant, which we appreciate, and because they're there day in and day out, looking at the conditions of the waterfront. Um, and again, the notion of privatizing, um, waterfront would be anathema to us. Um, Commissioner, please.
I, um, I have a question. I know one issue that certainly come up, um, recently is sort of the right to peaceful assembly, and I was curious, to what degree does the privatization of the streets impact that? Um, you know, and, and, you know, just citizens' right to walk there. To what degree will they have the right to shut down streets when, and if there is, you know, a desire for peaceful assembly? You know, and, and just specifically, what, what are the requirements around that? I know, you know, I raised this issue, it's sort of the, the issue that's happened with, with mall environments, which are completely privatized, um, and they restrict anyone from walking in with, uh, political signs, uh, from, from free speech, um, and you're allowed to do that because it is a private space. So, you know, um, what are, you know, what are the restrictions here? And how can we make sure that this is truly a public space?
So, I can, um, dig further into that and get back to you, but I do know that this street is supposed to be, and is supposed to act as a public street. So, it should, it should, it, you should smell and act like a public, public street. Um, but in terms of the specific requirements, I, I'll get back to you more on that.
We'll consult with council on that, it's a good question. Other questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Rampershad.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just, uh, when they come in, the applicant team, can you just have them speak to the timeline, the phasing, and the funding? Whether or not they secured the funding due to the COVID? I'm just curious if anything has changed with their, uh, planned projection of timeline.
Got it.
Commissioner Levin.
Uh, yes, thank you. The Queens Borough President raised an issue that- The Queens for President raised an issue that actually caught my eye as well. And that has to do with school seats. The information in the EAS was really quite astonishing about the level of overutilization of schools. You know, there are way too many kids in Flushing to end those school seats. I've never seen school utilization rates as high as the ones that were revealed in this EAS. And this isn't necessarily the problem or function of this particular development, but it raises the question for us as planners about the responsibility of adding new residents to a neighborhood where there is such a deficit of school seats. We get some information on, and the borough president indicates that there is provision, at least in the capital plan, for new schools. What's the prospect of addressing the school overcrowding issues that appear to be really pretty serious in this neighborhood?
So what's really exciting about the, about the SDA's 2019 and 2024 Capital Plan is that District 25 has been completely funded for fitting and seating about 5,600 seats, which is, which is great because the money is there. Now the problem is to cite these, cite these seats. In the, in Flushing, in the Flushing neighborhood, there's about 3,000 seats that need to be filled. And as of right now, so I reached out to SDA and we've found out that, that SDA has noted that Willits Point is actually part of Special District 2, which is where Flushing is. And within the Willits Point Special District, there is a proposal for a 130,000 per feet elementary school. That will seat about 700 seats. So there is that plan. Of course, we don't, yes, yes, you're nodding, yes. But there is that plan and they're working towards finding a site. The applicant, what I can say is that the applicant team has reached out to SDA and they've tried to, you know, work with them to see where they could cite a school. And at this point in time, SDA has been focused on, you know, getting actually the schools back in order during this pandemic times. So they've declined to answer. But I hear you and that is a concern for the city, actually, and planning as well.
Yeah, so the applicants are open to the idea of helping find space for a school in this project? Or do I misunderstand the way you put it?
Yes, yes, they're open to finding a school. However, it seems like the SDA hasn't, there needs to be further discussions on it.
Well, you know, but that's just classic of the SCA is that we produce these development, these opportunities for citing. You know, it happens with other city agencies too, that are always on the hunt for space. We come up with a, you know, we initiate redevelopment plans. Perfect opportunity for another city agency to solve their space needs. And because they're on a completely different planning timeline, the opportunity disappears. We've got to figure out a way to sync them up. That's not directly you personally.
I'll also note the work that is done by our capital planning division, focusing on the city agencies and the participation of the SCA with the largest capital budgets. And it is, at this point, maybe three or four years and is giving us remarkably more information about being able to map where the capital budget goes. One can't map every bit of the capital budget, but we've got a good handle on it. And just starting help exactly the kinds of conversations, Commissioner Levin, that you're suggesting. If DOT, an example of DOT is going in to do a road project and DEP has in close proximity and time one of their projects, is there a way to coordinate to avoid having the street torn up once? We've had useful conversations as well with respect to HPD projects and the ability to incorporate space for childcare centers in them. But you're right, that in a city of our complexity, this coordination is one of our challenges.
Yeah, and what we often hear from the School Construction Authority is that they don't want to commit to building a school at a particular site until they know the demand is there. But here we have the environmental analysis that proves that the demand has been crying out to be addressed for a long time. And here we have a chance to fix it.
Chair Knuckles.
No, I would just, I would just mention, I always thought that the purpose of the statement of needs promulgated by each city agency was to facilitate the coordination that is talked of in terms of looking prospectively at needs and trying to coincide, certainly in the context that we're talking about, space for a city agency with a project that's coming online.
I'm so glad you mentioned the CDNS, the community, CDSN, I'm sorry, the Community District Statement of Needs. That is something where the department, which oversees the process, has been able to deploy our fantastic tech skills. It used to be an incredibly intensive paper-based process that resulted in year after year submissions that looked like the prior year, cut and paste. We invested a lot of time in putting the system online, creating categories of needs so that it was simpler and more intuitive to fill out. And I think most importantly, working with district managers and all of the community boards to get them comfortable with the system, to learn from them how we could evolve the system. I don't think it is yet a perfect system, but we have used technology to take such strides in this important process of having the community districts tell us what their priorities are. We certainly are looking forward to the next round of it because given the pandemic and the economic dislocation, we anticipate that we may see significant changes. Commissioner Ramperchad. Commissioner Ramperchad.
I, he might.
Sorry, I had mute on, I apologize. I was just curious, with regards to the maximum height of 200 and 245 feet, does that include with the mechanical space?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then we will see this at the public hearing on Wednesday. And I would just like the commissioners to know that we anticipate that it will be quite a lengthy public hearing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Back to you, Ryan.
All right, for future votes, we have decisions scheduled for September 16th, 2020 for 101 Circle Road, 243 Robinson Avenue, both are in Staten Island, and 2440 Fulton Street in Brooklyn. Staff prepared reports for 1510 Broadway, also in Brooklyn, and the Monida Street Historic District in Bronx Community District 1. For follow-up, post-hearing follow-up items, we have Kathy Coe is available. I think she was going to discuss and walk through a letter on 110-40 Salt Hall Avenue. Kathy, are you here?
Yes, hi, good afternoon, Commissioner. So the applicant submitted a statement on September 8th in response to the questions and comments from the September 2nd public hearing. And the statement describes changes made from the original proposal, which were presented to the commission, which included dedicating a portion of community facility space for a community center, as well as modifying one-bedroom units to a mix of unit types ranging from studios to two bedrooms. So the statement submitted, this further describes the recent conversation had with Councilmember Moya, in which the applicant sought further exploring modifying this proposed five-studio unit into one-bedroom unit. And that would result in 21 one-bedroom units and five two-bedroom units in total to better meet the housing needs of the surrounding neighborhoods and potential tenants. The applicant states that they'll continue working with Councilmember Moya to program the community facility space to, and to address, further address unit types within the proposed building. And the applicant also states that the architect and applicant will continue to review these comments made about the unit layout and the facade and the window design. And they remain committed to providing a building that complements the surrounding neighborhood and to provide quality dwelling units for the residents in the area. And the applicant also wishes to assure the commission that the MIH units will comply with all requirements of HPD.
Comments or questions from the commission? Commissioner Levin.
Yes, thank you, Kathy. I have, I have to confess to still wrestling with, in my own mind, the question of the land use rationale for the rezoning. Because just looking at the neighborhood and the map, I fully understand why this block was rezoned, what was it, back in the 80s when it was confirmed, converted to an R6B district. That does seem very consistent with the areas immediately to the south and the west. And when I posed this question to the applicant at the hearing, you know, he of course made the best possible argument he could make on behalf of his client. And that is that this particular corner is on Two Wide Streets, which it certainly is. But then referred primarily to the context that is further to the east, which is really quite different. So I'm wondering if the staff has any advice to us about thinking about this context and the land use rationale and what really is appropriate at this location?
Yes, yeah, agreed that obviously the built environment further south and east are lower scale, primarily two to three, four-story housing development.
And fairly coherent, you know, really, really intact.
But the area just east of and including the subject block do reflect more of recent developments that are more similar to what the applicant is proposing, that being that six to seven-story buildings containing some kind of community facilities. And actually primarily having a lot to do with senior needs in the neighborhood. So I would say, in that case, with a proposed, you know, if the community facility space in this building does then, you know, continue to evolve into what will be a senior center, that would further reflect the, at least in the vicinity east of the site.
Okay, so can I take it, and you're always such good diplomats, but can I take it that city planning staff is persuaded that this, that there is a good land use rationale for this rezoning?
Yes, we've just got to discuss it that way, yes.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Levin, when, you know that we've adopted a policy at the department that if an application is complete and the department believes that there is not a land use rationale, we will certify, but we'll make a statement at the time of certification expressing the concerns. And this was not one of those instances.
Just want to be sure we're not in that second category here.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, also for post-hearing follow-up, the DS NY Queens 1 sanitation garage. Any further questions on that? And then on 5902.
No questions, but I wasn't expecting so shortly after hearing from the Commissioner of Sanitation that she was going to be resigning. I'm so glad that she was able to personally come and present this project before that happened.
And I can assure you that the department, or at least speaking for myself, was not aware of it at the time.
And we don't want you to blame yourselves for that. On 5902 Borden Avenue, I will say that we expect a robust response from the applicant and we'll follow up at the next review session. If there's further questions, we can take those now and get those back. But, you know, they had their work cut out for them. That's good, I think absolutely robust is what we need here because at the moment, I'm not persuaded.
Never mind. I think they've heard it crystal clear.
Yes. And then last but certainly not least, for the Rikers Island Public Place mapping, we have our DCP General Counsel, Susan Imran, will discuss the public place designation.
This threw out of a number of questions about why the public place designation, how was this decided?
Great, thank you. And good afternoon, Commissioners, can people hear me? Yes, great. I am, as Ryan mentioned, I'm here to provide some follow-up on the question that came up at the hearing on the mapping of Rikers Island as a public place. I want to start by addressing the question of how the mapping is going to prevent Rikers from being used to incarcerate individuals and then address some of the other questions that came up at the hearing last week or two weeks ago. So the public place designation that is being mapped means that the island has to be used for a public purpose. But in addition to the public place designation, the map is, there's a notation being added to the map. And that notation is going to require that the island not be used to incarcerate individuals after 2026. And so it's really the note in conjunction with the public place designation that's going to be the key to prohibiting incarceration.
Can I follow up on that, if I may?
Sure.
So that's really helpful because I guess, I can imagine at a different time or a different place or a different set of people could argue that incarceration is a public purpose. So it's not just the public purpose alone, it's the note and.
Yes, and the note was added really to make that absolutely clear, that, you're right, incarceration could be viewed sometimes as a public purpose, public function. But the note was added to make absolutely clear that no incarceration after 2026 would be allowed on the.
The other thing I would want to note is that removing that notation from the map would require a ULOT.
Yes, and I was going to, I would get to that, but any change of the public place designation and any removal of the notation is a change again to the city map. And any change to the city map would need to go through a ULOT process.
I see that Vice Chair Knuckles also has a question.
Well, yes, my question went to that 2026, 1231, 2026, because is it in question as to whether or not all of these sites will be completed because of budget uncertainties? So is the 2026 fixed in stone?
I'm going to have to defer.
I'm glad to address that. Those are discussions that are underway. This is an application that was filed by the speaker. And so there are now discussions about what the timing is and whether that date remains the date. We do not have that information today, but we thought we would use today's meeting, today's review session to address the questions around public place and then anticipate that at a future session is when we'll take on the issue of the date. So absolutely legitimate question.
Okay.
Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you, I just want to reiterate my Chair Knuckles' point. To me, the date restriction should be contingent upon the other facilities being online. So I certainly need clarification before we have that voted out.
No, thank you for that. Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, I just wanted to note how powerful I found the testimony that we got from the advocates. Now, when this was on the agenda, it seemed to me like it was pretty straightforward. Who could ever object? Why would there ever be a discussion? Of course, you know, this is an obvious follow-up to the ULOT that went through the city council. We knew it was coming. But it wasn't, you know, it didn't take me too many speakers to get into it to realize how really powerful and important it is for us to have a reminder. to realize how really powerful and important it is for us to have a reminder um of how essential this particular change is. And I just want to compliment the advocate community. I don't know how much they were in discussion with each other in planning who was going to testify to what, but I think we heard impassioned, once again, impassioned, articulate, um, well-thought-out comments in multiple dimensions of this project that remind us that we need to keep our eye on this job. So kudos to the advocates.
Thank you for raising that, Commissioner Levin. I I think all of us share that sense and I think that we can say that we wouldn't be at this place of having a plan to close Rikers if not for the years, if not decades-long work of the advocates. Um, we, the name that is attached to it is Judge Whitman, but we know that it is an advocacy community um that fueled and lifted um that initiative. Susan, did you want, have anything more to say about public place?
Um, I I could go into a little bit. There was a question about why we chose a mapping action as opposed to another means. I don't know if if that is is still a question that um, you know, is is a concern to to folks. But um we did, we did spend some time um trying to identify really what the best way was to um use the um the processes to prohibit incarceration in the future. And and um we worked largely city planning staff, but working with corrections and working with the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, with City Hall and with council staff. Um, and I think, you know, the council staff is important here. Um, uh, the speaker is a is a co-applicant along with Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice and and Department of Corrections. Um, and we tried to come up with the best mechanism that we could to um really um use what the tools we had to prohibit incarceration. We thought mapping in fact was the best, mapping along with the notation, because it could be mapping is sort of inherently site-specific. And so one could uh apply a mapping and a notation to Rikers and really have it be about Rikers Island. Um, and and mapping gave us the mechanism to put the notation uh on the map. Um, again, and that notation is really the key thing to say no incarceration um after the 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 date that's on the map. Um, it also though allowed us to identify that the public, the island's going to be used for a public purpose going forward. And so it served, I think, as this very sort of public stake, um, you know, placeholder commitment that when the future of the island is decided after the process that that will lead to that, that it is going to be used for a public purpose and it's not going to be privatized um or used for um, you know, any kind of um non-public beneficial use. Um, the decision, any decision then in the future about the use is going to have to start with the concept that it's a public place. And so it has to build upon that as opposed to start from someplace else. Um, and then as as the chair said, any effort or desire to change either the public place designation or the notation would need to have a a new U-LUR and go through the entire process again. So it was really a a good public placeholding statement that that embodied the commitment. Um, the possibility of doing a text change um or um sort of a rezoning, one of the other ways we could have done it, provided a lot less certainty. Um, and it would have been a little bit sort of atypical of a way of doing it. Usually if a use is prohibited, non-conforming uses can continue to, you know, continue on the site, which we didn't want. And then we also were a little concerned about the um prohibiting a specific city use on a specific site through the zoning resolution um as opposed to um, you know, using the zoning, the city map to do something that's really outside-specific. Um, the zoning may change in the future. Again, it's going to depend on what the ultimate use of the island is. And if it's a use that is inconsistent with the current zoning, then there'll be, you know, there there may be a need to come back and and to and to relook at the zoning and to do a zoning change. But that will again happen when the when the future use of the island um is determined. So that's why we thought mapping and the notation together were really the the most certain, strongest way of of making a statement about the future use, but also being clear that it would not be incarceration.
Thank you, Susan. It really was a belt and suspenders mechanism. Um, and in particular, the number one driver was make sure that incarceration is not permitted. And again, a U-LUR would be required. The second driving force is a public purpose, a public use. And again, to change that, U-LUR would be required. And Commissioner Bernie, to your point about does the current zoning of the island make sense? Um, we know that there will have to be public discussions about what the future, uh, the best use of the island will be going forward. And so we didn't see a reason now to propose a different zoning classification um since we've seen lots of great ideas, but not this sustained public engagement about what the future will be once Rikers has been closed. Um, Commissioner.
I think Commissioner Capelli has a question.
Yeah, I see Commissioner Dela Cruz is up first and then Commissioner Capelli.
Very quick question. So I just want to confirm then that if if for whatever reason the year needed to shift, that would require going through U-LUR because the notation would have to change on the map.
Yeah, that would be a change to the city map.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Capelli.
Uh, yes, and a in a related question, uh, uh, I would be opposed to changing the date that's currently uh uh under discussion. I think that uh keeping pressure on the city to close this thing uh is in the city's best interest. And certainly uh uh something as an advocate for closing it, that I would want to see as much pressure kept on the city uh as possible. If impossibility becomes a factor down the road, then the city and uh and uh the planners can deal with it at that point. And I absolutely support this approach to essentially take this uh piece of land out of play until there is a full uh discussion and uh a uh a viable proposal going forward. So uh, thank you, and I like this approach.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? So we will come back as we get more information from the other city agencies involved in the construction of the replacement jails. But we did want to clarify um the amount of thinking and the belt and suspenders and twine and staples approach that we took to make sure that incarceration could not be easily reversed. Um, um, Commissioner Levin, the way you talk about by future administrations. Commissioner, Vice Chair Knuckles.
I don't think I was misunderstood, but I'll say it anyway. Um, I'm all for 2026 closure. I, but I I just um wanted to raise the issue uh because uh I think we all want to avert a crisis uh in the hopefully unlikely event that that the due date could not be met. But this is not to misconstrue uh in any way. My personal desire that, you know, uh, the 2026 date be fulfilled.
Thank you.
Commissioner, can you hear?
Yes, Commissioner.
I'm I'm sorry that I I joined late and I I have not been able somehow toggle through to the voice. I finally got it working. So my, I have, the only question that I have is, you know, I'm hearing that this could only change, this designation and this note on the map could only change with a subsequent U-LUR. So we can, in fact, this body or subsequent members of this body can in fact remove the public place designation and the fact that it can be used for incarceration. Is that correct, through U-LUR?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We looked for, again, something that was, would require a full public process. Um, and with U-LUR being about the most robust one that the um that we have.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Susan.
Sure.
And I guess back to you, Ryan.
Yeah, unless there are any other business for the review session, um, this would conclude the public review session for the New York City Planning Commission for Monday, September 14th, and the time is 3:03 PM. Everybody have a good day.
Thank you. See you all on Wednesday. Bye.
Wednesday.